Fall River City Council Public Hearings and I'll be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libby, LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Yeah.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, Laura, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed unknown and permissible. First item is Michael Massoud, 383 Bayview Street, Fall River, Mass., for the removal of curbing as follows: The petitioner has an existing 16-foot driveway on Bayview Street and is requesting the removal of an additional 16 feet of curbing for a separate driveway opening on the Bailey Street side of the property. Is there a motion to open?
Motion to open.
A motion to open has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item. Calling all proponents? Calling all opponents wishing to speak? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
A motion to close has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Item two is Andre Soares of 853 Eastern Avenue for the removal of curbing as follows: The petitioner has an existing 12-foot driveway and is requesting the removal of an additional 15 feet of curbing for a separate driveway opening. The proposed work improves access to the property and does not cause significant adverse effect to on-street parking in that area.
Motion to move.
Motion to open. The hearing has been made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Is there any proponents wishing to speak on this item? Calling all proponents? Calling all opponents wishing to speak? Calling all opponents. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, any written correspondence?
No, Mr. President.
Hearing none. Is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
A motion to close has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Kadim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Council Committee on Finance, when I'll be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libby, LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Yeah.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, Laura, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed unknown and permissible. Madam Clerk, citizens input.
Good afternoon, Council President and members of the City Council. I wish to discuss the financial affairs of our city and cost of trash and solid waste. I wish to continue the citywide call for the resignation of our acting city administrator, Mary Sahadi. It was said in the last council meeting that I said Mrs. Sahadi should resign. I do not believe Mrs. Sahadi should resign. I believe Mrs. Sahadi must resign. This is for the betterment of our community. The city does not deserve any more misinformation, dishonesty to the council, and financial decisions being made for political benefit and not for Fall River. This is exactly what the city administrator, CFO, has done for the last half decade. Fall River deserves better, and I cannot wait for the city administrative position to be permanently filled. I also agree with Counselor Kadim. Mrs. Sahadi should not be a part of the Housing Authority. That would be a violation of our city charter. On another note, we need to discuss how crucial it is to implement a transfer station in our community. Mr. Carlos Caesar and now Counselor Michelle Dion worked for months to collect signatures for the voters to decide if the city wants a transfer station, and the voters decided, "We want a transfer station overwhelmingly." Although the vote was, quote-unquote, "non-binding," I would say any vote by our voters is automatically binding, and this council and city has a sworn duty to honor the vote made by our constituents. I hope this city can begin constructing plans for a transfer station. I placed an item on the agenda for tonight regarding a transfer station, and I hope my item can be transferred to a committee for discussion and not placed on file. That would be very disheartening for the city. We should also look into other ways we can reduce the contamination that goes into our recycling. We need strict enforcement and compliance with all of the waste that goes into recycling. We need to increase fines. We need to assure compliance with all our city's ordinances. I also believe the composting program as proposed by Counselor Lee and John Perry, as long as we have a citywide marketing and education campaign, will be a great benefit to Fall River. Thank you very much for your time. Respectfully submitted, Colin Dias.
Counselor in seat four, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Thank you. Council President, while I appreciate Mr. Dias's commitment, I guess, to the community and sending us information and his opinions and freedom of speech and all that, but is it really fair for people to continually send citizens' input bashing city employees without the employee having any chance to defend themselves? First of all, Mrs. Sahadi is not the acting city administrator, so that's inaccurate information. The rest of it, you know, I don't really think it's fair for that to be allowed week after week.
And I agree, and I appreciate that. So what I can do is work with the clerk's office and read these prior to the meeting to make sure there's no slander of any of our department heads in any way, shape, or form, and I will most likely, if it's slander or anything along those lines, will omit those specific items from citizens' input. So I will take a closer look at those prior to our meetings.
Thank you.
Counselor in seat five.
Every council president kind of handles things differently from what I've seen, and if there was an individual here at the table directly bashing people and calling them out, I think I've seen most council presidents stop it or, you know, cut it out and just keep it on the topic at hand or something to that nature. But when it's through an email, it seems like, you know, it's a free-for-all for the most part with some of them that come in. So I yield. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kupin.
Quickly, I think Pam brings up a good point. Possibly detract. I mean, people have the right to citizens' input, so I don't think we can totally exclude the whole writing, but as council president, maybe obviously review it and just scratch the verbiage that you don't like.
Sure. Going forward, in the community who's watching is aware that we won't tolerate any specific slander to specific department heads. Of course, I wouldn't allow for it to be done to any counselor here either. So I will make sure that I work with the clerk's office. I'll read them prior, and I will ask the clerk not to read those specific sections at that point. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
I would just like to add that when an audit was done a few years back by former Judge Armin Fernandez over the school department side for citizen input time, what they felt was that citizen input time should only be items that would be discussed at citizen input, would be items that are on the agenda that we are looking at. Any other citizen that wanted to share information or letters with all the council or a particular council could do that through the clerk's office. Maybe we should look at doing something like that. The other thing is, just a question, I know with the whole COVID, when are we going to have people have to come in to speak at citizen input time?
People can do that now. Nobody's stopping. We're back to open, so people are happy to do it. But for the foreseeable future, due to the circumstances with COVID, we're going to still continue to allow the written communication, but it will be looked at by myself and the clerk prior to being read.
I just wondered if that... But that's just a suggestion that they did on the school committee side that seemed to work better, so that if people did have a complaint, wanted to criticize, that they would just send it to the council, and councils would look at it, or school committee people would look at it. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
To the Honorable Fall River City Council, the Zoning Board of Appeals are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by honorable body, the City Council. I write today to ask, why did the Zoning Board of Appeals deny a blood plasma donation business that would have created 50 to 70 jobs? How does this denial make any sense at a time when Massachusetts is experiencing crushing unemployment worse than the country? How does the Zoning Board of Appeals explain its decision to leave the former Ocean State job lot building vacant when a business wants to come in and provide economic development and job opportunities to our city in that very space? Fall River historically has higher unemployment than the state overall. 50 to 70 jobs at a brand-new medical facility would be a great addition to the growing medical field, a top employment sector in our city. We desperately need good-paying jobs for our residents. I feel motivated to write in today because I have firsthand knowledge of exactly what goes on at a blood plasma center. I personally donated blood plasma while I was a broke grad student. Many grad students donated to make ends meet. The professors and teachers educating your kids today may have donated. Let me explain the donation process. It requires a mandatory physical exam and blood test to make sure you don't have any communicable disease. You have to show proof of residency and not have any tattoos within the last year. It is a very safe and sanitary process that takes about 90 minutes, and yes, you are compensated for your time, and it's $10.99 taxable income. A blood plasma donation center does not bring in drug users or homeless people as some keyboard warriors claim. Personally, I would welcome a new blood plasma donation center to our city. Our residents need the jobs. Does the Zoning Board of Appeals have a better plan to provide good jobs and economic development? If so, let's hear it. Thank you. Sincerely, Erica Scott Pacheco. And lastly...
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Can I just add on that one? I did watch that and wondered why that facility couldn't be housed in a vacant building. And many people who, you know, have to be trained through DTA, they become phlebotomists, so it would employ some of the people that BCTC is absolutely training for that profession. My understanding was it's because it wasn't a medical zone. It wasn't zoned medical. That was my understanding of it. But I agree. I did have some concern over that, and perhaps the council needs to look at zoning certain areas to allow businesses to come in. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Council President, members of the council, I am providing input today regarding the approval of any more TIPS or TIES here in the city of Fall River. I have forwarded to your email addresses several reports showing that TIPS and TIES do not benefit the cities, towns, or the states in which they are offered and do not provide long-term economic development opportunities or results. In a North Carolina State University study, we found that in almost all instances, these corporate tax incentives cost states millions of dollars, if not more, and the returns were minimal. In fact, the combination of costly tax incentives and limited returns ultimately left the states in worse financial condition than they were to begin with. In a Princeton economics study, it was found that state and local governments spend considerable revenue on business tax incentives. In terms of local economic effects, however, we find limited evidence that subsidized firms have employment spillovers in the local economy. With multiple studies showing the ineffectiveness of these tax incentives and the fact that they cost communities more in the long run, the City Council needs to reassess the value and expense of these tax incentives. These tax incentives do not make the money that these tax incentives waive go away. Those tax dollars are still included in the city assessment, and as such, the cost for these incentives are transferred to the residential and commercial taxpayers. In a city where the taxpayer and business are already overburdened by increased taxes and fees, does it make sense to once again hit the taxpayer up for more money so a developer or commercial enterprise benefit at the cost of the city taxpayer where the beneficiary does not pay any taxes? Fall River has become the low-hanging fruit for businesses and developers, and until the City Council grants some equity for the residential taxpayer, Fall River will continue to be owned by out-of-area property owners just looking to make a buck as more and more property owners make the exodus to greener pastures. Just in the sense of the Adams House project, there will be no long-term job growth or positions created. All the generated jobs will be short-term jobs and will probably be handled by out-of-city contractors and builders. How many will be long-term jobs? How many will be local contractors? How many residents? These are all questions which regularly go unanswered, and we find that Fall River gains nothing, not even in the short term. It has been said by a previous counselor that a TIF should be looked at as a fine gem and should be used in a few but beneficial occasion. The TIF now has become a tool where the administration and council give political payback for favors or support. It is a shame that the City Council forgets who they represent. You do not represent the mayor. You do not represent the city. You represent the people, and your actions and votes should reflect what the taxpayer needs, and what the city needs should always be secondary, as without the taxpayer, the city will have further financial difficulties. As I close with financial difficulties, I want to remind the council that the city is in a financial crisis, and there is still a structural deficit in the city budget. The structural deficit is because of overbloated middle and upper management positions and political appointees that do nothing but receive substantive salaries and stipends. It is financially irresponsible for the mayor and city council to approve any TIPS or TIES and should especially reconsider these at this time. The businesses and developers that are already working and developing their projects will do so without the tax incentive, and Fall River can no longer afford them. Respectfully, C.J. Ferry.
Next item on our agenda is a resolution to discuss the review of solid waste and I'd like to recognize, Counselor in seat two, do you want the floor first? It's your resolution. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion, who is the sponsor of the resolution.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Council.
So our discussion continues.
It does.
So I guess we'll just make it simple, short and sweet. How have we advanced and where are we in our process?
So right now, good evening, counselors, the rest of you as well. Right now, we're in the information gathering stage, so we're looking at all the avenues that we had discussed. I think publicly, we're not prepared to really make a presentation, but we, as you know, have discussed several different avenues. And since that point, I have undertaken gathering the information, doing the analysis of what we do, how we do it, what other communities do, how they look at their trash reduction approach, also costs. Okay, so how are costs compared to what it would be private industry? And, you know, along those lines, some of our solutions or possible solutions go hand-in-hand with possible reimbursement, let's say, to the city for certain services. And we have to look to make sure that those are in step with what other communities pay and/or what the service you would get from a private vendor. We've also looked at the business program. There are many businesses, as you put forward in your presentation, that we collect, that technically, you know, according to ordinance shouldn't be. With the pink cart program, that kind of morphed into something other than what it was originally intended, and we can't turn back the clock, but we are where we are. So we're also looking at that as far as what we can do to offset that cost for the residents and for the city as well. And also looking at larger-than-six-family or six-unit houses. That's also been part of the discussion as to whether we should continue to pick those up, whether they should be looked at as a business or as a residential property. That debate still rages on, but again, gathering that information, identifying those properties, identifying those businesses across the city that we do collect, and putting a number on what it costs us to do those. And then from there, you know, we'll get into the analysis stage of that information that we gather and see where it points us and what direction it leads us in as far as what's best for most efficient savings and possibly generate some revenue as well.
And we are looking at other communities who are in a similar situation that we are in, where that don't have, per se, purple bags, a purple bag program. They don't have a household fee. They have other means, and we're also looking at those communities, correct?
Correct. Part of this is also working with the EP. We have a great representative in Kathy Marza, who's worked with myself, my predecessor Ken Pacheco, for years, and she's a huge asset to myself in all of this. The interesting part is we're in a unique position. It's 351 communities in Massachusetts. Of those 351, there are only 44 communities that do not have either a pay-as-you-throw program, a unit fee per residence, or a combination thereof. Most of those 44 communities are either affluent communities that can afford to dispose of their trash in the way that they do and/or they have infrastructure in place, i.e. a transfer station or landfill or the like, to be able to handle it. So we're in a unique position where we have none of those. So we really have to get inventive on how we're going to attack this.
Of course, my famous question with the blue carts, where are we with that?
So I knew that was coming.
You knew that was coming.
I knew that was coming, Counsel. I knew that was coming. I spoke to Mr. Barrows over at the Housing Authority today. They're in the process of similarly doing what we're doing now. They're analyzing what it would cost through private vendors, various vendors, not just one. So it's taking them some time to see what that cost would be or if it would be more cost-effective to stay in-house with us. And they're going to be getting back to me on that. I believe the last meeting was the 31st, and I had said by the end of September we should have an answer, and I think we'll hit that mark.
And just for clarity, the end result will be either the carts will be removed or they will take on the cost of the carts remaining?
That is correct. That is correct.
Very good. So basically, I think we're looking at phases. This whole thing will be a process and probably come out in different phases. What do you think our timeline is in terms of... I know the business portion is probably going to be the first thing that rolls out in the first phase, so to speak, but in terms of all the accomplishments we want to make and what we want to do, what do you think is a reasonable timeframe?
So, you know, there is some low-lying fruit on the tree, and those are the ones we're looking at earliest as far as being able to actually enact something. I would say I would be wrong to sit here and put a timeline that the administration possibly can't meet. So that's something I don't want to put a time on it, but I would say that that low-lying fruit can be picked fairly quickly. Again, though, with that said, before we do that, I want to make sure that the numbers we gather, the information that we gather are correct, accurate, so we can make a educated decision on how we approach it. And that way, as I've said before, we don't look back. Hindsight's 20/20. I don't want to look back and say, "Wow, we should have done this." So I think disinformation gathering stage and the analysis is going to take us a couple of months, and then at that point, we'll be able to actually look at that low-lying fruit and see which one we want to pick first. I think there's a couple of them that we can really get in place quickly, once we have the data and it's analyzed. And then obviously, the bigger ones where it affects, you know, many, many residents, the six families, you know, and things of that nature. I think that's going to be a debate that will rage on this floor for quite some time. Hopefully, we can put something in place before the end of the fiscal year because that's going to allow us to realize the savings in this current fiscal year. But again, I'd hesitate to put a date on it and then kind of back us into a corner that we have to hit. But I'd say we're working on the easier ones as far as being able to make that decision quickly.
Yeah, and I don't want you to think in any way that I'm pushing or want you to hurry because I don't. I want this... I want us to get it right.
Correct.
I want it to be beneficial for everybody and just, you know, that we just keep moving forward. We don't drop the ball, and we don't let things go by the wayside. That's my main concern. And then, of course, the second part of it being, what are we doing in the future, and when are we going to work on that and get those conversations going also?
Yeah.
Because again, that affects the bottom line, and it affects the taxpayers in the city.
Absolutely. Something tells me you won't let it slip our mind, Counsel.
You don't think so?
No, I don't think so.
I think you're right. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
I wanted to... I'm just kicking things. Sorry. I just wanted to... When you saw having infrastructure in place, certain communities have certain infrastructure in place, we're going to be talking later about a storage facility or a possible area for storage facilities. When we do these initiatives, eventually, as they're called phases of initiatives, we're going to probably have possibly more barrels on our hands in the future. So I guess we need to make sure whatever facility we fall upon or whatever we build is ready for that as well, because there may be an increase in barrels, per se.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. And that goes hand-in-hand with something you said at the last meeting about storing them outside, and I don't think we really got to go down that line too far.
Sure.
But we've tried that in the past when we had the initial cart program. We stored them outside at the DPW facility, and honestly, it was a nightmare.
Right.
There's many factors that affect leaving them outside that I don't need to get into right now, but honestly, it's not the best solution.
Well, we came to... After that conversation, we came to this, hopefully, this next part of it, where we're able to finally have something in hand where we're looking at a savings down the road, but we have that.
Yeah, so with that resolution on the agenda, as Counselor in seat eight has spoken about many times, we're looking at wanting to put up a storage facility so that we can store not only carts but other equipment that's sensitive to the weather. You know, it's cost. So I think that resolution, the conversation with this council, getting that support is the first step in saying, "Okay, we're going to commit to spending this money because it's going to get us out of some leases. It's going to allow us to protect some equipment that we paid for that is valuable." And I think that's something that can be done short-term. It can be done quickly. Once the decision is made that this is what we want to do, identify where we want it to go, how large a facility we need to store not only my equipment but some of the other departments in DCM as well, and then go from there.
Part of that phase analysis is you're going to need to... If they're not already aware, you're going to need to inform these businesses, whoever has whatever carts they have, the pink carts or whatever they have. There's going to have to be an information dissemination process, I'm assuming. Now, is that something that you start early?
Yeah, I think once a decision's made, I think public outreach is huge. I think that's a huge part. We saw that that lacked when it came to enforcement and education, not only as pay-as-you-throw. As many people have talked about, it was rolled out extremely quickly. The education wasn't out there. The EP agrees. My representative at the EP says, you know, the best case is to be able to take your time, inform the public of what's going to happen, what they need to do, what's expected from them, what's expected from the city. So I think that outreach is huge.
There's different... You know, there's Portuguese-speaking and Spanish-speaking businesses out there as well that would probably need to have that information as well. I know we do pretty well with certain, you know, groups over another, but the other piece I was thinking of is when it comes to certain businesses, if they want to keep that service, if they still want to keep the city service, would it be treated the same way as we are with the housing and the blue barrels, where a business would be able to speak to the city and say, "Hey, we still want this service. We're willing to pay"? Would that be flexible?
Yeah, so that's part of the discussion, as I said earlier. You know, do you eliminate it? Do you put a cost to it? And that's part of discussions, and hence why we're doing the research and gathering that data to make sure that whatever we present, if we presented a situation that you're suggesting, our costs are in line with what industry is, with what other communities are paying and/or what you would get from a private vendor. We have to kind of be in line in that ballpark.
You don't want to undercut yourself on this.
You don't want to undercut yourself, and you don't want to overshoot, because then at that point, you might not get the interest in it, and you might not get as many participants, which would bring down your revenue. So that's all part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Mr. Perry, you had stated that you could build a facility 100 by 30, 100 by 50 for $130,000, you stated?
It'd be somewhere in that range, Counsel, 130, 150,000.
Okay, well, I find that really reasonable. I asked the Corporation Council Monday if you could get me a figure, or maybe you know, or Mary knows, all the rentals that you are paying now, what are we paying per year for whatever storage you're doing?
Mrs. Sahadi, I believe, has those numbers?
Yes, currently, we're paying about $62,000. We have... Chris Gallagher has some property on Rodman Street that he's renting at $19,200. DCM has property on Seaberry Street as well as Montop. Montop is really where traffic is storing their equipment. They're at $13,200. And then the Seaberry Street property is at $30,000, so $62,000. So, sixty-two thousand four hundred is what we're currently paying in rentals.
Let me tell you, I think it's a waste of money to spend that kind of money when we can build a building ourselves for a hundred and thirty thousand. Maybe it's the piece of land that you need, but also talking to the Corporation Counsel, you think he's got maybe something lined up, whether you know or not, that could maybe work, and I was impressed of what he told me. But I think it's time for us to get out of that business of renting and keeping our equipment and our containers underneath one shelter. I mean, that would be beautiful. And the place that I talked to you about on Bay Street, that didn't work out for you, right?
No.
That big piece? And we traded off, they built six, seven, eight, nine houses there, and we end up a piece of land we couldn't use, and it was pretty big as well.
It was.
And you already checked it out, we can't use it.
No.
What's the reason? It's just wetland?
It's, it's, that's, that's part of it, and I believe it's privately owned at this point, so we'd have to get them to go with it. Are you talking about?
Privately owned, I thought they gave it to us.
Off of Bay Street behind, in the area of Mike's Auto Body, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think the wetlands over there, the Brook, that was the bigger of the, of the two issues.
All right, well, I, I hope this year, we can find a piece, get it done, get rid of the rentals, save all that money, it'd be better for the taxpayers. I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Perry.
Yeah, I, just a couple of thoughts. I certainly agree with what I believe it was Counsel Lee talked about, making sure we do an educational piece, because we really lost the boat on that. But when you're doing all these comparisons, you know, out of three hundred and fifty-one communities in the Commonwealth, forty-four have no fee. Are any of those gateway cities?
I'd have to check that stat, Counselor.
Yeah, New Bedford is one.
Yeah, yeah, New Bedford would be considered one, correct? Thank you, Mary.
And New Bedford has no fees?
No fee.
But they have infrastructure in place, so they have their, they have their landfill, and they have their transfer station. So, they have two facilities.
Right. Sayonara. How much longer do they have?
About fifteen years, I believe.
About fifteen years.
About fifteen years.
But Taunton doesn't, Attleboro doesn't, a lot of the communities. Honestly, I think that the mayor should be looking and reaching out to the mayors within Bristol County, to the mayors of Attleboro, Taunton, et cetera, and, and all of the surrounding towns, because you're running out of landfill space. I mean, New Bedford has theirs because they didn't sell it, and that's why they still have theirs. We can't dump there, correct?
That's correct.
I know. That was a smart move on their part. I'll give my, my counterparts in New Bedford, kudos for that. But I think it's a bigger issue, and whatever steps we take along the way now are beneficial, but we've also talked about the educational piece relative to recycling, and I thought EZ had that in their contract, that they were supposed to do educational piece, or it was Republic that had offered to do it, remember?
There is a clause in that contract from EZ, but it, it's, it's not very specific as to exactly what the extent is as far as the educational piece. There, there, that piece of the contract is to help us enforce, so to put tags on barrels, tags on bags, excess bags outside the carts, things of that nature. They're helping us with the audit at this point. You know, they put on a gentleman at their cost to help us identify the businesses in the city, so they do work with us in a certain sense. As far as the public outreach, like, we've recently sent out with the tax bills, as we've discussed, multi-language pamphlet that shows recycling education. We wanna do some public access TV spots.
I think the TV spots would be beneficial. We've talked about that. I think that would be a good idea. But I thought Republic was willing to do some sort of outreach on recycling as well.
I'm sure they would be, Counselor.
Maybe you should call Ms. Sarah and ask. I'm pretty sure, a lot of these larger companies for public relations, et cetera, they do educational components, you know, in the schools, et cetera. They do some things, maybe it'd be worth reaching out to them.
We have, Counsel, just, just to that point, we have a meeting with Republic scheduled, so we're going to be sitting with them. Part of this review process is also looking at the current disposal contracts and sitting back down at the table with those folks and seeing what we can do.
Well, didn't we extend theirs? What are you getting now per ton?
We're in, we're in year one of a, of a three-year contract. So, year two begins in October, this October, at which point, our rate for trash will go up to one hundred dollars and thirty cents a ton. We're at, currently at ninety-seven.
I thought we were doing ninety-seven for three years, no?
No, we're doing ninety-seven for one. With the soil project, I worked with Republic to try to get us a better deal, you know, to work in, in combination with them on that project. They gave us a three-dollar reduction in ton for each of the next two years. Year one.
So, wait a minute, if, if we're doing the cover, if they're doing more cover on the Seven Acre Apostle that we had before that we got a million dollars for, so are we not gonna get money back from them on every truck that comes in and drops a load?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. No, this is, this is on top of that.
So, it's not just three dollars off?
Yeah, that was on top of that, Counsel.
Okay, so that, I mean, when they put, that'll be another million.
Yep.
That we'll be able to get from them.
That's correct.
Correct.
And then, maybe they'll put solar panels on that, because I see that that's a trend at some of these landfills. And the other thing, I did speak to Attorney Rumsay, and I have spoken with him over the last couple of months over a piece of property that perhaps the city could get, and you could utilize space there as well. I don't think all of that property should be DPW space, personally, but I think that the DPW garage, that needs a facelift, that needs a paint job, you know? Just because it's a Department of Public Works, it doesn't need to look like a construction site, and it's not your fault, Mr. Perry. It's over the years, we've just never invested into keeping it up. So, if you want people to take care of their homes, we want people to manage the sidewalks in front of their homes and cut the weeds and cut their lawn and make their house look presentable, we as a city need to look presentable, too. And I think that that area should be cleaned up, and whatever, whatever, I for one, whatever we can do to try to help you to get that, I'd be willing to do it.
Appreciate it, Counsel. Thank you.
But, you know, I think you're moving in the right direction. Things take time, but I absolutely agree that the educational piece is huge. With that, I yield, thank you, Mr. President.
And to Counselor in seat eight's point, Mr. Perry, I believe there's some inactive capital projects that, if there is any specific work that can be done to that building, whether it's paint, cleanliness, I'm sure you could work with Mrs. Sahadi, right? Mrs. Sahadi, there are some inactive capital projects that might work towards.
Yes, that's correct.
Identifying some funding on that?
Excellent.
That's correct.
Thank you, Counsel President.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Did you by any chance have the opportunity to look into the grinder?
I haven't yet, Counsel. That's a good point. Thank you for pointing that out again. I will get you some information on that and get back to you.
Is that the stump grinder you're talking about?
No, that would be a grinder that you can put mattresses, couches, that sort of thing through, so.
Got it.
It compacts it, and perhaps, I know at one time, though, you could sell it as cover to landfills and actually make some revenue, but that's sort of gone by the wayside a little bit. But we don't know, it still could be advantageous for us.
I apologize, Counsel, with all the moving pots and this, this trash issue, that slipped through the cracks, I apologize. I'll get you some information on that.
Not a big deal. You know, I'll, I'll ask. Thank you.
Appreciate it. You all need to remind us sometimes.
With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
Harry, none, or motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Finance has been made by Counselor Cadim, seconded by Counselor Deion. All those in favor, the ayes have it. City Council will begin at seven P.M. Four of the City Council meeting will be called to order. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Cadim?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
President Ponti?
Here. If everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent break.
Mr. President, can I ask that a moment of silence be for Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who left the earth better than she found it?
Absolutely. Thank you, and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is a communication from the mayor and an order rescinding the September continuing appropriation budget for FY twenty-twenty-one.
Motion to adopt the order?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor.
Go ahead and take these separately, please.
Okay, the first is an order and a TIF amendment for DeMullis Supermarkets at three seventy-five William S. Canning Boulevard.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
I just wanted to bring up a point when it comes to the TIFs, and I know we had spoken about this, and I mentioned it to Mrs. Sahadi. When it comes to TIFs, is it possible to have further discussion down the road as to the monitoring of the agreements within these TIFs? Because I'm, to my understanding, right now, the TIFs aren't being monitored.
Well, well, right now, in prior years, the city administrator, which we don't have one, would work with Mr. Fiola to make sure they monitor them. It is my understanding now with the vacant position that Mr. Fiola is gonna be monitoring them, I believe, is what Mrs. Sahadi indicated to me.
I think the assessor's office was involved in that.
And until we find a city administrator to fill that void, that's what we, Mrs. Sahadi has indicated to us.
Okay, 'cause in citizens, in citizens, I think there were some decent points brought up, and I would like to see if we are giving the TIFs away, especially in a time where we're lacking revenue, to make sure that the properties that are coming in and getting these TIFs, I'm sorry, the businesses that are coming in and receiving these TIFs are owning their end of the obligation.
Absolutely.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
If there's a TIF board that's put together for these situations, why not have the board and Mr. Fiola or whoever, or the administrator, be a part of that monitoring or oversight?
Well, on the TIF board would be the mayor, two city councilors, three city councilors, myself, Counselor Pereira, and Counselor Peckham, as well as the assessor, Mr. Goncalves, and Mr. Marchionne, who owns a number of real estate in the city. So, it's comprised and appointed by the mayor with the exception of Counsel President and the mayor. So, there is numerous debate and presentation that is made by Mr. Fiola or their representatives or the representatives for the corporations that do have, that do come before the TIF board, and then the TIF board decides if it's gonna send it to the City Council for adoption.
Okay, 'cause I'm thinking when it comes to the oversight piece, to make sure that, you know, the agreement is followed, you know, the more rises, the better, in my, in my opinion on it, so.
Yeah, and I agree, Counsel. I just, I don't wanna overshadow the fact that there, there should be, and as far as I'm concerned, there is a bit of due diligence, quite a bit of due diligence that is done on, before it comes to the TIF board. So, you know, the Office, Office of Economic Development, or whatever the name is, is, their job is to make sure that they, they do their due diligence before it goes to the TIF board and then comes before the City Council.
So, like, for example, right, if one of the TIFs, one of the more popular TIFs in Fall River so far has been Amazon, right? Was there ever an agreement where a certain percentage of Fall River residents were getting jobs there or were supposed to have jobs there? And if there was, was there something that we were supposed to do to, as a city, to make sure that that was being done?
That'd be a question for Mr. Fiola. If you'd like to waive the rules, we can ask.
I can answer that question.
Motion to waive, Counselor in seat one.
And I yield the floor, thank you.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Cadim.
So, all the TIFs have Farover residency preference, so it's just a preference. So, there's nothing that can really mandate whether or not they hire, so they just need to take the preference. So, typically, all the agreements that we have before us have that language in there.
And there's also verbiage inside of the TIF that says they're gonna hire X amount, they intend to hire X amount of individuals, X amount of, you know, workers throughout the period of time.
So, to see, through the president's receipt one, is that, does that mean there's really not a lot of teeth to that?
Counselor Cadim?
Oh, I'm sorry, I said, what was the question?
Yes, if there's not a lot of teeth, does that mean there's not a lot of teeth, teeth to that?
Well, I don't know.
Is it for show?
Subjective, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I defer it to Mr. Fiola, if I see his hand up, but I would think that, I mean, you'd, you'd be hard-pressed with the TIF to make an argument that they haven't given preference, if, if obviously, you know, everything being equal, I think they would hire Farover residents, but I mean, again, it's rather subjective, right, when you're interviewing?
Is there a motion to waive the rules?
Motion.
Motion to waive the rules has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Lee. All those in favor?
But I believe that's part of their reporting requirements, too, to.
Mr. Fiola, I'm sorry if I didn't get the name right. It's changed a couple of times?
It's changed.
I apologize. No disrespect neat towards the organization.
Good evening, Counselors. So, first of all, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, but in specific answer to your question, I can tell, so, we've done, the city of Fall River's probably done seventy-five TIFs throughout the years. I believe that the first TIFs were done probably in around, around two thousand and three, two thousand and five, that timeframe, and actually, it was Lightaleer at that point. They were doing an expansion, and they got the first TIF. So, we've led the state in the issuance of TIFs. We've also led the state in terms of evaluation of those TIFs, in terms of compliance. So, state law mandates that the company only, only report on job creation once a year, and it's usually at the end of the fiscal year. So, sometime in July, maybe August, the company will respond to the state with how many hires they actually had and where those hires come from. Our TIFs are much more, much more aggressive in terms of reporting, and we actually require the companies to report on a quarterly basis. So, in the past, prior to, prior to the previous administration, we were monitoring all those TIFs. We would work with the, with the city. We'd work with the assessor's office in compiling those TIF reports, making sure that the jobs were being created within a specific timeframe. If those companies were off, they were notified. We actually, throughout the years, have actually rescinded a couple of TIFs because they didn't meet the job requirements. We put clawback language in the TIFs that says if you fail to meet your job requirements, then you have to repay the city. So, there's all, that's all in the agreements, okay? So, and in terms of job preference, there is job preference for Fall River residents. You cannot really mandate that, because, you know, most of the times, if not all the times, especially with regard to the, the TIFs that are before you tonight, there are other communities that look to recruit companies and accommodate companies. So, it's always been the philosophy in the preparation of the TIFs to make sure that we try to protect the job interest Fall River residents to the best of our ability. But we stop short of just mandating that, because there may be not, sometimes the people in Fall River may not meet the job qualifications.
And I've had you have that conversation, you know, dozens of times.
Right, and so, that's right. So, there's, so we make our best effort, and then, then what we do is when we, when we receive the quarterly TIFs, we can identify how many employees are actually from Fall River. that were working in Amazon were from Fall River, so, which was a good thing. So, yeah, there's a lot of checks and balances in these TIF agreements. We're probably amongst the state leaders in the issuance of them, but more importantly, also in the enforcement of them.
When, when, you said that you're more aggressive than most areas, I'm assuming most in the area of Taunton, New Bedford, Fall, you know, Brockton, wherever, correct?
The whole state, yeah.
Now, when you, when you do a quarterly report to make sure that TIF agreements are being followed, where do they go? Do the, do the reports come to, come to the city?
Yes. So the companies require to submit a report to, at that time, it was my office. In the last three years, we were written out of the agreements, even though sometimes we're in there, sometimes we weren't. But prior to that, reports would come to my office, the mayor's office, and the city assessor.
Now, now that we're kind of in a different situation, is that going to be reestablished? Or is that something that's...
If that's something that the city would like us to continue to do, we could, we could do that with the city, yeah.
Okay, all right. I yield. Thank you.
Councilor in seat six, Councilor Peckham.
And I do want to acknowledge, I am on the TIF board, and I was unable to make the last meeting. It was 8:00 a.m. and I worked during the day.
No problem.
And I apologize. Is there a way, once, and I'll touch upon what Council Lee mentioned, to go back to where there is a quarterly report, it goes through all the checks and balances, make sure everything's accurate, and then the council receives a copy of everything that's in compliance? Is that something that's...
We do already.
We do get it quarterly?
We do.
Okay. Now, Amazon, you said hasn't been checked in a couple, couple of years?
Yeah, but I would, if, I would guess that we'd probably have a similar type of occupancy of those jobs from Fall River. You know, that's, that's why they, Amazon likes to, to locate where there's an available labor force. And that was one of the determining factors as to why they located this area. So if you remember during, when Amazon was, right before it opened, they did extensive work with the Career Center in locking up employees. So, and that, that continues on. Amazon is continuously hiring, right? So, and right now, between October and the, the Christmas season, they're going to be hiring additional employees, and then they taper off a little bit. But on average, there are over 1,000 people on a continuous basis that sometimes swell, swells during the shop, you know, the holiday season. But, and actually with the COVID, it's even been more employment opportunities because of, you know, the fact that they're shipping more product.
Okay. And thank you for the clarification. I'm just...
We'll get the clerks to check the most recent report and send it all to all the councilors.
Appreciate it. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor C. Two, Councilor Dion.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Traditionally, the duration of a TIF would be five to 20 years?
That's what states, it's a minimum of five, maximum of 20.
Maximum of 20. Do you know how many TIFs we have at the present time that are still, for lack of a better word, still open?
I wasn't prepared to answer that. I'd give you a guesstimate. I would probably say it's somewhere between five and 10.
Between five and 10. Do you have any idea what dollar amount that represents?
Off the top of my head, I can get you that information. I just wasn't prepared to answer that tonight. See, I can get to that, though.
Okay, thank you. That I yield.
Anything further?
Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Fiola. Madam Clerk, there is a motion on the floor to adopt the TIF for DeMuller's supermarkets that has been made and seconded hearing. Councilor C. Two.
I thought that was an amendment as opposed to an adoption of a TIF.
No, it's, I have an order to adopt on the floor.
An amendment.
What are we amending?
The order is amending the agreement.
Councilor C. Day.
That, that was a change to their TIF because that's Market Basket, the DeMuller property. They were going to purchase some additional land if Mr. Fiola would like to explain that.
So when we did, so when we did that initial TIF, at that point, there wasn't, right now, the way Market Basket is set up with South Coast Marketplace is actually a condo, condominium, condominiumization. Sorry to get that out. So that the Market Basket property is separate than the balance of the South Coast Marketplace, and then they share parking. When the initial TIF was being presented, it was not positioned to be that way. It came, that adjustment came after the TIF was approved. So what you have before you tonight is an amendment to the existing TIF. It doesn't bestow any additional benefits in terms of incentives or financial benefits to Market Basket. It just clarifies for reporting purposes and also assessment purposes the fact that there is a condo and that there's a shared parking area. And so that's what the amendment reflects.
So basically, it's the designation, so to speak.
Yeah, somewhat, yeah. So it more accurately reflects what the end product represents, correct?
And just for clarification, there's no confusion. There is an order before us that needs to be adopted, even though it's specific to an amendment, but it's an order before us to adopt.
Motion to adopt the order has been made and seconded hearing. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 2B is the resolution and TIF agreement for Sea Fox Holdings LLC at Zero Airport Road.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the TIF.
Second.
Has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion. Councilor in seat two, Councilor Dion.
So basically, I don't, I, I would say that I am not going to be supporting any TIFs this evening. And my reasons are, you know, we're in unprecedented times. We had a difficult budget cycle. We keep talking about how 2022 is going to be much more difficult. We've had water increases. We, you know, the taxpayers feel like they get nothing but increases on their end. And essentially, these TIFs kind of represent lost revenue. Just in the first year alone, these three TIFs will represent $309,161 in taxes that we won't receive. And I think in a year when we're trying to really cut expenses and increase revenue, that, that, it, it just makes it much more difficult. And I don't think we can afford to not have this revenue. We have many, many businesses in this community who are very invested, have never asked for anything, and have, you know, been the backbone of our community. And, you know, once, these are three businesses, a total of 10 years. One business is five years, one is eight years, one is 10. But the total dollar amount at the end of it is $1,219, uh, excuse me, And I think that, that's a significant dollar amount for this community. You know, and then the other thing is that I noticed, and I'm sure there's a reason for it, so I'll ask you, incremental assessed value. The assessed values of the properties, whether it's a five-year or a 20-year TIF, never goes up, never increases. But yet, homeowners, your, your property value increases every year, and you're taxed at a higher rate every year. Why, so what, what, why is that?
Because we don't know what that increase is going to be, so we just flatline it. So what happens is if the tax value goes up, then there's a greater savings. If the tax value goes down, then there's less of a savings, so.
So the dollar amount that's assessed today is the actual assessed value of the property now? Or is it a little under or a little over what the value is now?
So it's an estimated value, right? So if you look at these TIFs, the, so there's, for clarification purposes, there's two TIFs and there's one tax increment exemption. The tax increment exemption is for the Adams House, and that pertains to the development of the property for market rate housing. So that's separate than the TIFs. But in each instance, so on the two TIFs, the land in the industrial park and the land in the technology park, that land has a taxable value. The city continues to receive whatever revenue is being generated from that taxable value. So there's no, there's no reduction in revenue to the city there. When you, if this, if you look at this table as the, as the land, there's value generated from the land that doesn't change. Once you put a building on the land, now you have new taxable value because now you have a building. The TIF applies to the new taxable value. So while there's, so the, my, these exemption schedules may be representing a savings to the city or to the, to the development, there's also real estate taxes being generated from that project. So for instance, in the, the first one that you have before you, over that five-year period, there's $71,627.40. That's a tax savings. But during that same five-year period, the city is receiving $66,170, okay? Without the TIF, there'd be, you know, there would be $133,000 thereabouts, right? So it's an even balance there. But I, I can tell you, and, you know, so, these TIFs are differentiating factors as to why companies expand and why they don't expand. And in many instances, without the TIF, the TIF, it's a two-part component. There's the local tax exemption that's granted by the city. And then if the city decides to grant this tax exemption, then the projects become eligible for an investment tax credit from the state. If the city doesn't do or forgoes, you know, denies these TIFs, then there's no tax credit from the state. So the tax credit from the state usually pales and is much greater than what the city's participation is. But this, the state's not going to give a company a tax break unless they see that the city has some skin in the game. So that's, that's what you have to weigh out, right? And so, you know, some of these companies have started small because of the TIFs that we've granted them, and they've grown to hundreds of employees. So that's, you know, the, I think the, if you really sit back and look at the track record in terms of the TIF, the amount of money that the city's invested, the amount of money that's been generated is from new jobs being created from these projects, then this, you know, the city's investment pales in comparison. And I understand your, your analogy on, and I'm not here to debate that. You're entitled to your opinion. And I don't discredit anybody's opinion. However, I do think in the overall scheme of things, TIFs are a very, very important component to further economic development. We have three projects before you that are moving forward during a COVID period. Not many cities have expansion taking place right now, okay? A lot of people, a lot of businesses are retracting. People are expanding and investing millions of dollars. You know, you got the coal storage facility, which is a $22 million project. You have Adams House, which is a $13 million project, and you have the smaller here, which is like 1.3 million. And so they're, they're all over the place in terms of private investment. But without these TIFs, you probably don't see this private investment, especially because they wouldn't be entitled to other incentives from the state.
Now, isn't one of the purposes, or maybe the main purpose of a TIF or a TIE more in line with economic development in terms of attracting businesses that are not within the community already and bringing them to a community?
No, that would be prejudicial to existing businesses. So if you have an existing business within the city that wants to expand, they should, they're legally entitled to and should be entitled to the same sort of TIF benefits or incentives that a company moving from in, from outside the city into the city. What the state likes to see when they're rewarding their tax credits to these companies is the sale of that particular company's product to outside of Massachusetts because now you're bringing in new money into the Commonwealth. You're not just spreading existing money around. So that's how they determine their incentives. So, yeah, so the TIFs program's available just about to, to every business in the, in the community. If you, as a matter of fact, for better or for worse, I've been at this job for a long period of time, so, and I've worked with, you know, many businessmen and women to help build that industrial park. Just about every company in that park has received a TIF. And now you're employing over 6,000 people there conservatively, another 1,200 at Amazon. So you, you know, that's, if you want to look at the economic engine of the city, it's the industrial park, right? That's where manufacturing's taking place. Your higher paying jobs are taking place. You know, the amount of jobs being created, the amount of tax revenue that's being generated. The other thing you should keep in mind is that these TIFs before you also don't, if you're a manufacturer in Massachusetts, and none of these, none of the, the two TIF applicants are not considered manufacturers, in addition to the local real estate taxes that they're paying, they're also paying personal property taxes on their machinery and equipment, which is an additional revenue source to the city.
But none of these three fallen into that category?
These are only two TIFs. The other one's a TIE, right?
A TIE, correct.
And these two, so in, so the, whatever, they will be taxed on their personal equipment in those, in those facilities. So that's an additional source of revenue that's not reflected anywhere here.
Okay, thank you. That I yield.
Councilor in seat six, Councilor Peckham.
Outside of what Council Dion said, I agree with her 100%. I'm also going to be a no for the, both the TIFs, reason being is the oversight, which I had brought up earlier. There seems to be, I know we don't have a city administrator, and when it was said that maybe you were going to oversee the TIFs, people looked shocked. I just want to see that there's oversight for these TIFs before they're approved and before I vote yes on them. I want to have something in place that's concrete that shows that these, these TIFs are being abided by, by the businesses that are applying for them and they're being approved. With that, I yield. Thank you.
I think in the TIF agreements themselves...
It has the oversight.
There is the oversight, no?
It is.
Right, they report. They're, they're going to have to submit their, on page, page two of the TIF agreements, item number six. The city, the company shall provide the city with a quarterly report to be supplied by the city within 30 days from the end of the quarter immediately following. So said reports shall, you know, contain at a minimum the following information: employment levels, utilization of local contractors, you know, so there is the mechanism there. You know, in the past, you know, we, we worked very closely with the city to make sure these companies were complying. Moving forward, I will work again with the city to make sure that these things take place.
And not to interrupt, I apologize, Mr. Fiola. I would just like to see a little more due diligence in this, and not that it's your fault at all. But like, for instance, it was brought up, Amazon maybe hasn't been looked at in a couple, in a couple of years.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it hasn't. I'm just saying that I was not involved in it.
Do we know who has been over the past couple of years?
I know that, I know that, I do see their annual reports that they submit to the state. And I know that they've, don't forget, Amazon, the agreement with Amazon, their TIF was only to employ 500 people. They far exceeded 500 people. Their annual reports that I have seen show that on average, they're employing, you know, anywhere between 1,000 and 1,200 people. So again, they far surpassed what they were supposed to be doing with the city. I'm assuming that they're submitting their quarterly reports to the city just like they submit their annual report to, to the state. So I'm not saying that it hasn't been done. I'm just saying that since I haven't been involved, I haven't seen them. They, they probably have been, have been submitting them.
I yield the floor, Mr. President.
Councilor in seat five, Councilor Lee.
Just, just to be clear, I'm, other people have said they are or they're not. I, I am going to because I actually, I don't have a negative opinion on TIFs. I actually have seen them work well in, not just here, but in other areas. It's just a matter of, I think the very important component to this is making sure that there's follow-up, there's follow-through, there's oversight. So that doesn't just fall on one person, and it shouldn't just fall on one person. It should fall on whoever's involved in the process as well, whether we have an administrator or now if we're going to be involved in the process of at least seeing the reports to making sure that what we agree upon is, is followed through. Economic development is not just based on TIFs and whether we have TIFs or not. I think everyone puts a lot of, you know, a lot of emphasis on TIFs because it's an easy topic to talk about. It's something that's always in the news. It's something that we have to talk about here. But economic development is, there's, there's several different components to it that this is just one piece. And if, if a city's struggling economically, we have a lot more than just TIFs to be worried about. So I think that we're putting a lot more emphasis on this than it needs to be. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Councilor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
No, I have, and any counselor, if you want to see how any of the TIFs are doing, any of the reports, they're available because I've looked at them, specifically Amazon. I was, I was curious about that. And also, I think Blunt had, had gotten some help and done some expansions.
Just about every, every company in the park has received a TIF, just about.
You know, and they've done very well, and they've had expansions, just like one of them on here now. One is brand new coming in, and the other one is in the expansion.
Yeah, so the other one is Hutchins Holden, which we, which we recruited to the, to the city back in 2006. They came over and we gave them a TIF when they came over. They started off with 30 employees, and now they have close to 400.
That's right.
Yeah.
That, that's great that they've done that. But I, just for my colleagues to know, that if you do want to see any of the TIFs that we have outstanding, you can call. Mrs. Sahadi can get them for you to keep up on them.
The TIF, the TIF reports go to the mayor's office. The mayor's office sends them to the city clerk's office. The city clerk's office will then send it to the city council. So it's, it's been, it's been ongoing for a bit now. Well, I just, as I mentioned earlier, we'll make sure the clerks get us over a copy of the most updated reports. But they are, as Councilor C. Day indicated, they are available.
Thank you, Mr. Fiola.
You're welcome.
Councilor in seat one, Councilor Karim.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Ken, you and I have had conversations about this, so I think you know where I stand philosophically. So I kind of tend to mimic what Council Dion has, has mentioned, and maybe Council Peckham. Although every time you come before me, you always kind of bring me back to center some, at some point. But from a philosophical standpoint, just so that people know where I stand in terms of TIFs in general, you know, when, when TIFs were first started, they were for urban renewal projects and trying to redevelop communities. My issue has been that we've gotten away a little from, from that philosophy. So I appreciate the, the value add that you've brought to the, to the conversation in terms of making sure that we truly understand the positive impacts associated with the TIFs. So the job creation, the expansions that, that's going on. But I also recognize, and, and my frustration becomes, what are we doing for small businesses, right? So the cornerstone businesses of our communities, the mom and pops. And it's not necessarily particular to this discussion itself, but I think it was last year or the year before, we did something completely different for the first time in the city's history, and we took Mero Manufacturing and actually reduced their taxes, right? There was no added value, no new growth. With TIFs, I can, I understand and appreciate that we're, we're gonna, we're capturing the total assessed value now. So we'll continue to get those taxes on, that's currently on the payroll. And all we're adding on is a, is a, at least a benefit or a reduction in the new growth, either for five to 20 years, and with that comes some additional benefit. So I, I can appreciate that, and I truly do. And I, and I think a TIF is a tool in our toolbox to be able to utilize and, you know, try to recruit companies coming in. Because if we're not competitive, the New Bedford's, the Taunton's, the Brockton's will continue to get all the... the Tauntons, the Broctons will continue to get all the, the jobs in big manufacturing and, and commercial businesses that we're looking to do. You know, people can complain about Amazon, but if Amazon, the TIF wasn't there and, and your office wasn't completely fighting for it, we would have lost that during this whole, you know, transition, I guess, you know, from, from the mayor's office that, that was going on. So, I applaud that. My, my hesitation, and this is the only hesitation, is, is that when we have companies who are prepared to already invest in the city, and then we come back with the TIFs. So I guess one of two things that I would like to start seeing, and I, I guess I'd put it on counsel president, is number one, when the TIF board comes down with recommendations, if we can have a highlighted, even just a bullet point of everything that's on the table, right, so that we can truly understand, if we don't approve this, that means they're not eligible for X, Y, and Z, right? So the, the state historic taxes, which a lot of the times, and Counselor in seat two and I were just having a conversation behind the scenes before the meeting started about the historical value and historic tax credits and how that, that's tied in. And I've said it, I don't think there should be a tie-in and a mechanism that the, the city is in first before the state's in. I think the state should be promoting, and they have a little bit more ability to do that than some local municipalities, especially gateway cities, which are very reliant on tax revenue that are coming in. You know, so if we can get that, so we can truly understand that what a no vote means, and sometimes we don't necessarily see it without having the conversation, saying, okay, you know, that they're losing out on this financing, or, you know, these are other, being able to leverage other resources that's, that are really kind of driving these projects to be economically feasible in our communities. So reluctantly, I was, I was, I was ready and prepared to, to vote no, but since you came down and, you know, flexed your muscles and got me back to the center, I think I might just support this. But also moving forward, I, I think from, from a council's perspective, I think we just need to have a conversation with the administration as to what it is, what's the criteria going to be in terms of approving these? Because I, I truly do feel that the TIFs come down and it's a rubber stamp, and I know you, you folks have the TIF board, and, and I support the conversations that are being had there, but I, I think this council itself needs to start having some conversations about what criteria, what meets the criteria, because I think it should be opened up to everybody, but if we start giving TIFs to everybody, then we're, we're losing out on some revenue, and again, it's only short-term, five to 20 years, depending on the TIF. But I think when we're making these decisions and when, if we're, especially if we're going to start, you know, shooting down TIFs and rejecting them, we should have a solid reason as to why we're not going to be approving these, right? As opposed to just, you know what, I don't support TIFs, right? So if we can, if we can work with the administration, just have those conversations and, and really kind of have a checklist as to, okay? And I, and I think it, to be quite honest, I think it makes it a lot easier for the, for the TIF board, or at least the members that are on the council, supporting the council on the TIF board, to say, okay, these are the criterias that, that they need to meet. Do they check off all the boxes? Right, that's just one counselor speaking to this, and as I mentioned before, I wasn't going to support this, but I, I will support the, the TIFs that are before us for the reason that there are some additional monies that are, that are going to be leveraged through this. There are obviously some, some benefits, you know, new, new jobs and things like that, but I, I really do want to try to create, correct and, and, you know, address some of the concerns that I have moving forward, that's all. With that, I yields.
Mr. Fiola, going forward, if you could please work in the administration through the city clerks to send a cover letter to the TIF board, breaking down the pros and the cons and summarizing, because I know when we get these TIFs, there's a number of pages in these contracts. And as Counselor in seat one indicated, we won't be putting these items on the agenda without that kind of cover sheet, even if it's after the TIF board. But I think it'd be beneficial to the TIF board that breaks down, and I know your office and would be able to do that for us.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem. I think, you know, these TIFs, you know, they're, they're continuously being refined, right? So for instance, as I'm sitting here and thinking, the other benefit to the city that I haven't talked about is, whether it's good or bad, is the stormwater attacks that these, that these projects are now going to generate. You know, you look at Amazon, I think they generate over $200,000 to the city in stormwater taxes because it's such a big site. So these here will be less, but it's, those are another revenue source in addition to personal property and these other things. So, we can put that together, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
Thank you. We had asked the prior city administrator last year if there was anything specific, if there was criteria for these TIFs, and at that time she had told us that there wasn't. But we, the council did ask for that last year from her.
If I recall correctly, Counselor, that was when they sent down a personal property TIF for a specific development. I think that's around that time, and we, we were kind, a number of us took exception to that, but I don't...
But we asked if they had general criteria, and there isn't any.
At that point, they didn't, no.
And when we, when you do send a cover letter, will you also let us know what the TIF board vote was? Because that was my next question, what was the vote on these by the TIF board?
It was a unanimous vote with the, there was a couple of, Frank Marchionne recused himself because of our involvement in the TIFs. He's the president of our board. Counselor President Ponte recused himself under TIE for the Adams House because of a business relationship, other than that, it was unanimous across the board.
Okay, and I agree with Counsel Peckham that there needs to be oversight, and you had sent, you had just mentioned where these reports go, Counsel President, but who, they all go somewhere, but does anybody check them, or do they just get filed somewhere along the way?
Well, I'm sure with, before it goes to the mayor's office, it seeks a number of different departments. I can't answer that, I haven't really seen one in a while. Mr. Fiola, do you know the process?
Yeah, so when we were, so we, we actually reviewed them, had reviewed them on behalf of the city prior to the previous administration, and so if somebody was out of compliance, we would notify the city, the mayor's office, the assessors, saying, you know, ABC Company is short two jobs, and there would be a determination, we'll give them another quarter to see if they catch up with those, if they don't catch up, put them on notice for the potential rescission of the TIF itself. So, we would actually monitor the TIFs in accordance with the job generation and projections that they were doing to make sure that they were complying, notify the city if there was a deviation, and that's all we could do. And as a matter of fact, we actually came down and rescinded a couple of TIFs from companies that just didn't meet, weren't even close to their job creation. So ultimately, the rescission power of the, the local TIF lies in the hands of the city council. But it has to go through the TIF board for a rescission vote, and then it comes to the city council for the vote. And we actually did that in the past, and, but we, luckily, we haven't had to do that more than, I would say, three or four times.
So with the past administration, was anyone looking at those, or are you now looking at those to make sure they're up to date?
I'm agreeing tonight to look at these, working with these quarterly reports, I'll work with the city to, to reinstitute that.
And then my other question was, for number, for 2A, for Demola's supermarket, the letter here says that, that's just cleaning up the language of it, it's not anything new?
That's correct, it's just, yes, there's no incentive, there's no additional money, nothing changed, it's just reflecting a condo as opposed to a single real estate development.
So if counselors were to vote no on that, that would just be no to changing the language?
Yes.
Okay. And then you had also mentioned, the follow-up was mentioned in item six, but I didn't see that. I think it's at page two, item six, was that for 2B or 2C?
It's all the same, in every TIF agreement, on page two of the TIF agreements, which are located maybe three or four pages from the back of your package, there's item number six that talks about the quarterly report. Like if you go to CFOX, yeah, 2B, if you go one, two, three, four pages from the back.
Okay, that item six, okay, got it.
That's, that's where it talks about the quarterly report.
It also says the forever assessor will be responsible for monitoring job creation, activities, and compliance with the terms and conditions of the agreement.
Okay. So then I, I guess I just have a question for, Counsel Peckham's on the TIF board?
Mm-hmm.
And so is his only objection the follow-up, because he voted yes to the, the actual TIFs? I just want to make sure, a unanimous vote?
He was not present at that.
Okay, that makes sense, all right. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further?
No.
Hearing none, thank you. There's an item, item B, the TIF agreement for CFOX Holdings LLC has been made and seconded, hearing no further discussions, roll call.
What item are we on? On adoption of the resolution, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Yes. Next item on the agenda.
Next is the resolution and the TIF agreement for Hutchins Holdings LLC at Innovation Way.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the TIF has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Yes.
And item three is the resolution and TIE agreement for JNK Realty at 1168 Highland Ave.
Motion, that's item D, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adopt has been made by...
We did see. You just did see.
We did, okay. Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
LaLaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponte?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda. Next is the resolution and the TIF agreement for Hutchins Holdings LLC at Innovation Way.
Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt the TIF has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The motion to overweigh.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the structure over a public way has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All set.
Thank you.
Thank you. All set, it passed, you're good.
You're good.
Next order of business.
Next order of business is the mayor's communication requesting the confirmation of the appointment of Timothy Campos to the Board of Election Commissioners.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, the appointment has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 3B is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Joseph Rio to the Cultural Council.
Motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm the appointment has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 3C is the mayor's request for the reappointment of David Dennis to the Board of Election Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number four is the mayor's request for the confirmation and reappointment of Mary Sahadi to the Housing Authority.
Madam Clerk, this is also for the term until 2023, can you just clarify for the record?
Yes, so Mrs. Sahadi's appointment back in 2008 expired in 2013, these are five-year terms. She was reappointed in 2015 by then-mayor Sutter. At that time, that should have been an appointment that should have expired in 2018. However, he did a five-year appointment to expire in 2020. So had the terms been handled properly, it should have been 2013 to 18, 2018 to 2023. So these are basically correcting the term of the appointment, which should have expired, which should have been a full five-year term.
There's a motion to adopt that has been made by Counselor Lee, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier, is there a discussion, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion?
I just have a question for clarification purposes. So essentially, we're just confirming the dates as opposed to the reappointment?
It's, it is an appointment of sorts because the last appointment that we had expired in July of this year, but it is, it is more a correction of the terms that were, that should have been in place at the time of the appointment.
But it is also a reappointment as well.
Okay, all right.
Two birds, one stone.
So this was actually brought to the city's attention back in 2018, but no action was taken at that time. So this is, the mayor is asking that this now be corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinance would be appropriate.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
Has been made by Counselor Peckham.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the Board of Election Commissioners and official results of the primary election.
Motion to accept the place on file.
Motion to accept the place on file has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to amend.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas the City of Fall River is seeking to decrease and/or eliminate its spending on storage rental fees, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene to discuss funding for the construction of a storage area facility.
Motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion to sponsor the resolution, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Just to continue the conversation that we've had during the budget sessions, we of land that was let go for taxes years ago. So now, for the city to obtain it, I'm being told by attorney Thomas that the water department needs to purchase the land, and then they can deed it over to the city, which makes no sense to me. First and foremost, when the water department went to the CPA requesting the $54,900 to purchase 29 acres of land, I thought that's a lot of land for $54,000. It said that it was for hiking and biking trails, et cetera. But then when I asked attorney Thomas about it, I asked them if they could send a map because we didn't have a map, and nobody knew where this was located. Well, I'm hearing that it's landlocked, oh, and the majority of it is wetlands. Well, if it's wetlands, we're not gonna put bike trails and hiking trails through wetland, and if it's landlocked, how we gonna get to it? I just don't agree with this. I did speak to an individual who had previously served on the CPA board and said, I saw many times the water department coming forward wanting to buy land, and, you know, under watershed protection, and they really didn't think it was watershed protection, and it didn't really get passed. I have an issue with this, I mean, my colleagues can do whatever they want, but I am, I am definitely voting no on this. And you know I have an issue with the water department and land, so let's put that out there. They buy land, they don't sell it, and then we don't want to give TIFs to people, but we're letting the city buy all this land for nothing that we're holding on to. I just find it ridiculous that you have land that was let go for taxes, but the only way this city can get it, deed it to them, is if they sell it to another city entity who then is gonna transfer it to them. If it's landlocked and wetland, you're not gonna let anybody build there anyway, so why you spending $54,900? Well, that's what I come with, so that's why I make a motion to deny. With that, I yield, thank you.
Continuing discussion, councillor in seat two, councillor Dion.
Yeah, do you think it would be worthwhile to have the CPC come before us and explain why they approved it to begin with?
I think that's appropriate, our representative and attorney Thomas, probably. I know there were, I agree with some of the concerns that our colleague has in seat eight, but there are some unanswered questions, so I think it'd probably be appropriate to invite a representative, attorney Thomas down here, have an honest discussion, and if the information that is accurate, which I have every reason to believe it is, that we can then act that time with all the information.
And perhaps somebody from the CPC also?
Of course. Madam clerk, if you can please add that to the agenda at our next meeting, and we could make sure that we have those representatives, we can have, add that item to the committee on finance, maybe make that one of the only items at the next meeting.
Because, I would probably agree also, if it is truly landlocked and you can't utilize it, what's the point? But I think without further explanation.
We'll also invite attorney Rumsey to that meeting as well, so we can give him some time to prepare for it as well, so we'll have that at our next meeting.
Okay, with that, I yield.
Councillor in seat eight?
Mr. President, could I make an amendment to that? That because it's real estate, that it go to the real estate committee for further discussion with all the players?
Sure, if you want to refer it to the real estate committee, the real estate committee could have that discussion if you'd like. Is there a motion to refer to real estate?
Motion to refer to real estate.
Motion to refer to real estate has been made by councillor Pereira, seconded by councillor Peckham, discussion on the referral to the real estate committee. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I know my colleague, Mr. Pelletier will certainly handle that.
He will.
He will.
Item eighteen is the, an order, a communication from the mayor and the order rescinding the July and August continuing appropriation budgets for FY '21.
Motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift from the table has been made by councillor Pereira, seconded by councillor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So motion to rescind would be appropriate, madam clerk?
Motion to adopt the order.
Motion to adopt the order.
Motion to adopt the order.
To rescind has been made by councillor Pereira.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Dion, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And nineteen is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Jose Barboza to the traffic commission.
Motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift the item from the table has been made by councillor Pereira, seconded by councillor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So motion to confirm the appointment would be appropriate?
Motion to adopt the order.
Motion to adopt the order. To rescind has been made by councillor Pereira.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Dion, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And nineteen is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Jose Barboza to the traffic commission.
Motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift the item from the table has been made by councillor Pereira, seconded by councillor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So motion to confirm the appointment would be appropriate?
Second.
That has been made by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Lee, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Public Works and Transportation at a meeting held on September 22 voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying communication be approved as amended. This is the street opening request for pavement less than five years at 522 Buffington Street.
Motion to adopt the report.
Motion to adopt has been made by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Dion, discussion. I, councillor in seat eight, councillor Pereira.
Just a quick question, the five-year street opening on Buffington, what was the purpose of that? Was it an emergency?
Councillor Kadim?
Sure, put me on the spot.
Councillor, you are the chair of the committee.
I am, yes, no, it was a request because there was, so it's a corner lot, there was, I believe, three lots that were divided, two of the lots were developed, one of them wasn't, so they're now looking to develop the lot. It's typically the same issue that we run into every single time that we pave the roadway. The applicant stated that he never received any notification that there was a moratorium or there was gonna be any moratorium. So now he came before us, he recognizes it. The committee made the recommendation that we approve it, but they need to go curb-to-curb with the cut, so doing two seams versus a four-seam patch, they're in agreement with that. So Buffington Street is a narrow street per se, but it will be curb-to-curb. And I will say, just as a side, also the amendment that was, or the motion that was made, was to also refer to the planning department so that they would add that any new, or in the future, any cuts coming before us would require a curb-to-curb fix for any road cuts that were put in by the developer, at the request of the developer, I mean, at the request of the town through the developer, and if there's any changes that need to be done in ordinance, that they would refer it back to this council.
You know, I agree, I mean, the person didn't know, wasn't notified, I'm so sick of hearing that because we've been hearing that for years. When is it gonna be that the zoning board or variance board, when is it gonna be that there is a block there that says, this street is less than five years old? So if somebody's coming down, that they're made aware of it. I don't know what it takes to get that there, we talk about it every time, and then, you know, if it's an emergency, you have to open the street, there's something that needs to be repaired, but when people are gonna build and it's already been, they have to know. If not, then other neighbors who live on the street get upset that, you know, we waited so long for this street to get done, now the street is done and they're ripping it up right away. I mean, I'll vote for it because I feel badly that this person didn't have the knowledge, but I think we need to, I'll put in a resolution for the next meeting that they have to have, even the building department and any variance or whatever that's given, that they need to have some kind of a notation there on their form to say how old the street is. Because if not, we just continue to do it again and again and again and again, and then I sit here and complain and complain every time, it's done. So I'll file a resolution. Madam clerk, you can file that resolution for next meeting. And get it into ordinance, that they have to have this listed on their forms, doesn't make sense. With that, I yield, thank you.
Councillor in seat one, councillor Kadim.
Yeah, I, listen, I personally don't disagree with councillor in seat eight, I've been saying this, I mean, we've, we've been talking about this at nauseam for years now, right? So it's, every time we have a conversation, it's just, you know, we want, we want, we want, we never get, right? So that comes to my frustration, and I think it was the last time we had this conversation, we talked about making sure that all the moratorium, all the roads that were under moratorium were listed in the building department, was on the website, it's not there, it's not being done. You know, you've got residents who are coming in, you know, playing that naive card, well, I wasn't notified, well, I mean, you can tell that there's a brand-new roadway, you know, so I'm sure there is documentation that would suggest that there were certified letters that went out to the abuttes for the property, but we need to do a better job, and at the end of the day, you know, this council, there's only a handful of us that complain about these streets, I think we all agree with it, but at the end of the day, everybody approves these things, right? So I don't know how much more we can possibly do, so I think one step at a time, from our standpoint, at least from my standpoint, we've now made some progress, right? So as opposed to a patch, we've got curb-to-curb, right? So hopefully, maybe in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, we'll get to a point when we say a road's under moratorium, guess what? It's under moratorium for five years, right? Regardless if it's just a mill, or if it's a full-depth reclamation, or whatever the case may be, I'm in agreement with it, I just, it is an absolute, one of my pet peeves for any municipality is that we invest in our roadways and we just cut it up. You know, you look at Plymouth Ave, we did the same thing, and everything is considered an emergency nowadays because we're afraid to say no to things, so I think we've made a little bit of progress, not the progress that I agree with councillor in seat eight, not the progress that we want to see, but I'm banging my head against the table over here, with that I yields.
Councillor in seat eight?
You know, to that point, I received a call yesterday from a woman that told me they are digging up her street to put in gas pipes. And she said, well, you know, aren't you gonna put in water pipes too? No. So you're putting in these pipes, they're gonna finish the road. They said that our water pipes would come in, in three years. Well, there's not even five years there. So if that street is already open, why aren't the water pipes being done at the same time as the other pipes being in there? Those are the things that, you know, I get frustrated, what do I tell this woman? Well, she said, better wait three years than never get them, but those are the kinds of things. Perhaps we should send a letter to the mayor's office that we'd like a list of all of the streets that are under the moratorium of five years to be placed on the city website and on the, in the building department. Can I make a motion that we send that letter?
Motion to send the letter.
Second.
Has been made, seconded by councillor Kadim to send a letter, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?[1300.04]